Okay, thank you. Call of meeting to order. Disclosure of any our interest and the general nature thereof? None, thank you. Adoption of the meeting agenda. Be it resolved, the council approved the agenda of the special meeting dated April twenty five, two thousand and twenty three as presented. We have a mover in a second here first. Okay, Gary, Harry.
Take your choice.
Yeah.
On paper. Harry. So, the presentation and review of the two thousand and twenty three capital budget. And then the presentation and review of the two thousand and twenty three operating budget. What we're going to do is turn the meeting over. Oh, but before I do that, just let me make a big thank you to our staff who work really hard on this tonight's effort. And our two counselors, counselor. Pat and Harry for your contribution, very much appreciated. And now we're going to turn it over to Steve to make his presentation. Steve's going back there. I'm going to sit over there and. Better, better, let's get out of here.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
And I'd like to thank all parties involved with the work on the budget again, office staff, public works. As well as the budget committee. First and foremost, we will be discussing about the two thousand and twenty three capital budget. For capital budget. There are numerous funders involved. The funders are the gas tax, which is your Canadian Community Building Fund. As well as the OSIF, which is your Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. NORTS, which is Northern Ontario Resource Development Fund, FENNOR. The Federal Economic Development Agency for Northern Ontario. The Canada Healthy Communities Initiative. Without these funders. We would not be able to do the projects within town that we require. Beginning with the gas tax. We have currently few ongoing projects with the gas tax, and that's under the Heritage Preservation Project. And that comes out to a total of eighty one thousand nine fifty. Next would be the zoning bylaw official plan project. This was set in. With our municipal planner. Currently, our plan is set with the ministry awaiting approval. Once approved, then it will be complete and there's nine. Thousand that is still owing to that. Some of the new projects under the gas. Would be for the water treatment filter, water distribution valve, UV assessment project. And we're looking at approximately twenty five thousand for that. As well as the municipal service delivery review project. We're looking at that just to assist the municipality with reviewing all services. And suggestions and unbiased opinion. And we are looking at possibly seven thousand for that, so. With our gas. Tax, what we have is currently a hundred and eighty one thousand nine hundred and sixty five, fifty five coming into this year. After these projects here, we are still looking at fifty nine thousand and thirty six dollars and fifty five cents to carry over. But as we all know. Things can change and for continuation with this, I have to speak with the funder again. OSIF. Ongoing project is our current wetlands. Rehabilitation, and that's a director's order project. We've been a director disorder as you all know for many years, so. This is still a continuation on with that. New projects. As council found out, the previous council and this council here. Is what the ministry is CLI ECA project. So that's our municipal sewage collection systems. And right now, what they are looking for, the ministry here, is an operations and manuals document. So currently fifteen thousand dollars have been put aside for that. Also, an upgrade to the wetlands isolation valves project. Number of items have to be completed there, and we're looking at additional ninety six thousand there for our OSIF balance. We're starting with two hundred and ninety nine thousand nine eighteen fifty five. And with these projects at hand, we will still have eighty one thousand one one eight twenty five. Just to reiterate, we cannot move funding from one funder into a project of another or for other items. It has to be specific. To be approved because they require documentation updates of the projects as they go on. Next is NORTS, Northern Ontario Resource Development Fund. Currently, we have three projects assigned. To that. We are looking at. NORTS to be, our funding's a hundred and forty nine thousand five sixty two thirty nine. With the projects that we want to complete, and that would be the Langtree Bridge. South Station Road to Commission. And that, as far as we can go with that, as well as the Silver Prospect Argentine, with the recent digups there. To pay those as well, so we would get those covered under NORTS. And our NORTS balance would be two hundred and twenty four dollars and thirty nine cents. Next would be. FENNOR, and this is the ongoing project from last year, the tech park. What's remaining on there is the installation of the lights along the path. Okay, installing twelve of them. And currently. We have thirty seven thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars remaining in that. Our municipal, municipality has to do put a small portion in, so a municipality portion of two thousand four hundred and. Two thousand four hundred. And seventy seven dollars. That would give us a zero balance for FENNOR, and that will be completed this year. And also, we have some remaining funding for the. Canada Healthy Communities Initiative, which is landscaping along the walking path. And that would be what's remaining from that, the five thousand. And also currently, there is twenty five thousand set aside for the Colbarium or the Silverland Cemetery. Other items that are currently ongoing, there is the garage. So work still needs to be completed there, and we're expecting approximately a hundred thousand dollars still left. Completed. And then our municipal fleet. Actually, at this time, I will ask our public works mechanics, even Cooper, come forth. To discuss the trackless.
Call it a trackless.
Oh, it's excellent. This is manufactured.
You've got to speak up or they won't hear you on the, on the computers.
So we're currently looking for one half ton to replace the twenty ten Chevrolet. We took it off the road. Last year. And currently, our twenty ten F one fifty is. Steve does it in the budget for a new truck. And we're going to the trackless, which is two thousand and two, the town purchased it in two thousand and eleven, completing refurb. Does have some significant wear in the center pins. We did put a new sander on, on the back because we brought it out, but we do need a new lower attachment, new sweeper attachment. It is twenty years old, there's sixty six hundred hours on it. That power meter was changed when we bought it. It's twenty one years old. Any questions? There is some new safety standard inspections coming out. They have been brought in for the trucks. If they proceed with the pickup trucks under certain G W, those that twenty ten F one fifty will be up taken off the road.
And that'll be the second one, or that's the one we're requesting?
So definitely need one right now and possibly.
When you get these vehicles, if you get these vehicles, like, are you considering rust proofing them?
They have been, but.
We just don't, okay.
There, there has been some.
You're asking, okay.
Just a question for council for the trackless, in your opinion, another year with it.
I won't guarantee a year because we've been caught in that boat before where we said, yeah, we'll get another year, and we've had a catastrophic failure. He said it will make a year, and it don't make a year, so we don't want to say that it will, just for that reason.
Is there any trade in value in that?
I don't know what Aaron was working on the, he was working on the.
Yes, on the deal?
Yeah, because we do have an old one that we sweep with, but we've taken it out of service because it is completely finished.
We could probably do the same with this one, move it, move it to sweeping and get another one for winter.
Have it on a standby.
So now with sweeping, with this machine, it's going to increase probably double the hours we put on per year.
So it won't last as long in the end, will it? Yeah.
And if we were to spring for a new one of these, like, they set up payment plans too on these things, you gotta, yeah. So what is, what is that working here? We have an idea if it's a thousand a month or two thousand a month. Discussing that as well. What we put in the budget currently right now is approximately seven thousand, and that's a payment from July to the end of this year, December.
That's for the pickup.
For the pickup truck, yes. For budget purposes, as well as we were looking at if obtaining, starting payments for trackless come November, so. We will be looking into those possibilities. Definitely items that are required.
No choice.
So currently, from our capital projects. Those would be covered under the funder. Other than, we would be having to bring over twelve thousand nine seventy seven fifty one over into our operations. And that would be the two vehicles, as well as what's remaining left on the tech park. What I did put in here, budget, but for discussions, is the fire truck. I will ask for chief, her, again. Captain Cooper, come up and discuss.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yes.
So I don't know if everybody's read the report. Counsel, if you have any questions, by all means. Our biggest concern is that we have a nineteen seventy four pumper in our, in our hall. It's not honest to God, it's. In Northern Ontario. We've had pumps tested the last couple of years, and we get them tested every year. Anything twenty years older, we have to have them tested. And they basically failed last year. We had to do some work to discan the passive. New regulations coming up, and when they go to test it, if it fails, we won't have any. All other service, we wouldn't even be able to use it. One of the fallbacks of pulling out of service is that if we take a truck out of service, we're down to one, which is never good. Protecting municipality, and as well, we wouldn't belong to the mutual, municipal district mutual aid plan. Because you have to have two vehicles to belong to. You have to be able to receive and offer. I know, Steve, if you want to touch base on any of the. Like, I just, just to, just to keep it up to speed as far as, I talked about NFPA last year. So there's regulations that the fire department goes by, and it's NFPA standard, so nineteen seventy four truck. Built in nineteen seventy four to NFPA standards in seventy four, not two thousand and twenty three. You know, you have Chevrons on the new vehicles now. We have automatic relief valves where. Right now, we're relying on a guy that sets a relief valve, which is a safety issue because. He happens to kind of turn his head or something, and the hose gets turned off, and then somebody can get hurt. She just called Steve the other day, so we actually have just a lap belt. On the driver's side of the truck. It's not even an actual seatbelt. There's nothing on the passenger's seat like it's just, it was built in nineteen seventy. It certainly doesn't meet today's standards and definitely affects the safety of firefighting as well. Now, we were fortunate enough to raise twenty thousand so far towards a new truck. And a few years ago, we actually, the fire department raised sixteen thousand dollars to purchase brand new helmets. Outfit everybody because some of the helmets were getting to be over ten years, which is once again against regulations.
What's the advantage of that? Two truck thing that you're talking about, is there an advantage?
Well, there is because if something happens, you get a structure for your one truck doesn't start while you're, you're SOL, so. But the other advantages that say Coleman needed help, we could send a truck to Coleman and still have one back there to protect our municipality.
But there's no other like a, it's not like a financial advantage or anything like that, grant for it or anything like that, okay.
And the truck that I did quote in the, in the budget, right now, the shortage of chassis and that, so it's like, it's an eighteen month build. But they, Zoller looking for the commitment from the municipality, and I would have to check in as far as financing or when you'd have, you obviously wouldn't have to pay for it right away.
Do they require a down payment for?
I'm not sure the finances. I think I sent it to you, Steve, but I never really looked into.
I believe there was a down payment on that, but I just wanted to look at some other avenues as well for funding on there. Where, what possibilities there are to move forward.
My understanding as well is, I think if one time you get a hundred thousand, you might want. Municipality is based under twenty thousand populations.
That would be a nice help, yes. Tiny help, but, you know, but it's something that has to be done. How many years the kid been saying, we've got to find the money somewhere for fire trucks.
And the other fire truck is thirty years old.
Yeah.
Forty nine year old truck and a thirty one year old truck.
Just a good thing.
Collectors out there that would want to buy our old truck?
We could, we could, I mean, we could definitely sell it. I'm not sure what it's worth. I don't know if you get five or ten thousand for it, it's hard to say. I mean, it's, it's in good shape, just. Collector, yeah.
Yeah, for a collector, yeah. Every penny we can find. It's an absolute.
Easy fix on that one, eh?
Nope. Not at all.
When do we need this?
Now, we're.
Tomorrow.
The good news is you can't get one for eighteen months anyway, so I mean, you don't have to pay for it for at least that.
It's not going in on this budget then.
No, the down payment will be next, next year's budget anyway.
We have to discuss it with the manufacturers. Is currently required. What about for the other vehicle for the pumping tests? Because it, correct me if I'm wrong, and did it not fail?
It won't fail. But the newer truck, we did do some, I did do some minor repairs to get it to pass the volume test. It doesn't pass the pressure test. So there is still a significant amount of work to be done to that truck also.
The problem is years ago, when they used to come up and test the truck, as long as it pumped, was it eight forty years, Steve? Whatever was the, the bare minimum, they were okay with that, but nowadays, whatever the truck is designed or built for, it has to meet that. That regulation, so if it's a ten forty pumper, it has to pump ten forty or. It's, it's failed, so. He's just covering his avenue because if something happens, and we go back and say, well, you know, the truck was, was tested, but it failed at a fire scene. So it's all about liability nowadays, and they're covering themselves like everybody else.
Now, I believe last year, just to, I don't know if you brought counsel up, but last year, the council approved, I think it was roughly fifty thousand, Steve, for a used truck, but we were.
I mean, at an auction or something.
Yeah, different, like, we've tried different avenues and. That wouldn't go too far.
No.
Getting a twenty year, twenty two year old truck for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Another one was close to two fifty, saw there, yeah.
Counsel. What I can do is provide a staff report on some financial. Avenue that municipality can take for the fire truck. Next upcoming meeting. And also have Chief Hearn and Captain Cooper involved in it as well. Because they are always on the outlook, looking at the trucks, even when the bidding for even the secondhand ones. We're all looking at it, and at the last. Last four hours on the. Auction, it would run from honestly twenty thousand up to two hundred thousand.
I hate that. I wonder what's happening is manufacturers are actually buying good used trucks, and they're reselling them. So they'll buy it online for a hundred and fifty thousand and ask two hundred and. To do a little bit of work so that, because they know there's a demand for it. And it's, it's like we're on a few websites in the gargoyle, that, that one came from GovDeals, and I think they paid. One ten for it, but they're asking one eighty for it or something. Supply and demand right now.
You guys see the one that was for sale at Martin River there for a while?
On the side, yeah, yeah. We got police officer taking picture of it the other day at one of the fire scene. He couldn't believe it's still in service and it looked that good.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Thanks for the good news.
How many buckets should we buy?
For a half ton tanker.
So with all the items that I did mention earlier. We are looking at. Six hundred and seventy one thousand seven oh nine and twenty seven cents. So saying we can provide a staff report for the fire trucks.
And this doesn't include a campaign for a fire truck if we choose to go that way.
Not at all. Because that would be pushed into the operation. Costs too, or depends on the funders. There is a demand, as they were saying, about even the used fire trucks right now and their prices. Hold it times that, any vehicle. So that is the capital budget. I can remember that, six seventy one as we. Next will be. Twenty twenty three operational budget. So again, I would like to thank staff and the budget committee, public works, office staff, as well as the fire department team. When it comes to operating. Budget. The municipality is also legislated to provide services for the town. We're talking about fire protection, police services, building inspections. Road and bridge construction and maintenance, cemetery, waste collection, recycling disposal. As well as drinking water sanitation. So. We're also looking at each of these, but. None of these can really change. A lot of these are fixed costs. So the budget does not reduce any of the service levels. From outside contractors, which I'm bringing, and I'm talking about animal control by law enforcement. And social media moderator, but it'd be councils often, if you feel, you have to change some of those. The operating budget includes the following adjustments that were made after an extensive review by the working group in an effort to reduce expenses. To achieve a balanced budget, council will need to consider a tax increase and taking from reserves. Or further reduction in expenses, and like I said, the budget committee went through this with line by line. One of the items here is no increase to councils, remuneration for two thousand and twenty three. Would be one of the items. A pause to funding for outside groups. A pause on the move forward strategy, council onboarding. A pause to employing summer students. Reduce the library operating grant from twenty, to twenty five thousand from thirty thousand. Include. This also includes a payroll for the temporary works department employee for a few months that he was here. It includes a new half ton truck purchase. Approximately seven thousand. And the new trackless purchase. It includes. What is required to restock inventory for sewer and water department. Includes for the intercell cleanout of the wetlands. Includes for repairs to the windmills of the wetlands.
Yeah, look at these two numbers here, like you're thirty five hundred, you're forty five hundred. Did you guys work these numbers? This is kind of. Just to get the bare bones on the shelves, or is this?
Bare bones.
Or restock replacement parts to other water treatment plant. This also includes the fifteen sixty for Canada Day activities. Which we received a grant, so it will offset it. Also, it includes thirty five hundred for a kid's item at tech park from the Quoness, must make foundation donation in previous years. Desktop that was required for the office. Crashed. Also includes a remaining here of the five year commitment for physician recruitment. The software license that is required by the. Ministry for the new asset management programs. This also includes six thousand dollars for a demo of derelict properties here in town.
Do we know how many there are?
Which ones, I guess we know, but.
That one could change big time, Gary.
One of the major things that did increase was transit contract. And right now, we're looking at a sixteen percent increase.
After sixteen for transit.
Sixteen percent increase from.
Fifteen percent?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah, sixteen thousand, but it's also sixteen. Yeah, sixteen thousand, but it's also sixteen percent.
It was about thirteen thousand.
Were we about forty two or something? Forty two last year and now we're.
And we're going up to sixty.
That's not horrible though. I thought it'd be worse.
Uh, we also included, uh, purchase of two sets of fire department bumper gear.
What is that detail? What is that?
For a fire department, yeah.
Oh, make it bigger?
Everybody move up.
Yeah, right at, at the top and what I'm doing is an overview right now and then we'll fine tune it. Also includes fourteen thousand four hundred on our share towards a new landfill site in Tumis King Shores. And a waste management increase of five thousand eight hundred and twenty one dollars. So see where things have increased dramatically on here. Five thousand eight hundred and twenty one dollars.
Is your waste management?
So the guy that pick up the garbage in town? Is that what it is? That's on top of the fourteen extra dollars we're paying you for twenty grand.
I think.
Everything in this is more pricey.
I think back when we started.
Said they had to, you know, they were. Is that the opening or the, yeah, that's new landfill site? And, uh, then we had to pay certain amount every year. Towards the closure of that landfill site they're using now and then we're now paying for. You know, they filling up the funds with them for the preparation of the new land. Relying on them and. Need fun.
So as, uh, we could see up here to our general government up on the screen here. For all of our IT municipal, general government. And it includes payroll, everything. We're looking at six hundred and thirty two thousand one eighty. Transportation, that includes also the garage, home payment, transit services, everything. We're looking at seven hundred and sixty three thousand one ten. Our health, uh, social and family, we're looking at two hundred and sixty six thousand period forty. This includes DSA, Tumis King Health Unit and our year five of five for the physician recruitment. Uh, next would be the recreation and culture. We're looking at fifty five thousand four thirteen. Then we have our planning and development, which is our asset management program is seven thousand. And here, uh, protection to person and property, we're talking about OPP nine one one fire dispatch. Bylaw enforcement services contract, building inspection service contract. As well as our animal controls contract, we're looking at five hundred and fifty four thousand nine sixty two. And also, uh, environmental services finally, uh, seven forty two, one fifty eight. This is everything from recycling service contracts, water, wetland service contracts, waste management collection service contract landfill. Get all them up. We're looking at three million twenty one thousand one sixty three. So now to offset all of these items, if you take our operations. That was time. Uh, going back, that bin collection was a five thousand eight hundred. Just wanted to clarify that. So right now, if you're looking at our operating costs are three million twenty one thousand one sixty three. And our capital is six hundred and seventy one thousand seven oh nine. We are in a deficit of our revenues at the time to go in. That would be up to council. We have done up a few scenarios, the budget committee to offset. Like I said, we went through every single line item. Expenditures, look at revenues, some possible revenues is something that I would like, uh. Us to look at in the new year. Yeah, yeah. Well, right now we are looking at a deficit here and. Based on our revenues. While we were looking at different operating expenses or operating revenue. We look at different percentages to have an offset and we still have to go from our reserves. And we've taken from our reserves last year as well.
Hundred and seventy six thousand last year.
That's how we do offset everything. It's by law, we have to have zero balance. And right now, doing this too, we are looking at. With the, uh, we're looking at the different increases. While we're looking at nine point five ton increase. This is six percent of water operating and six percent of water capital. We are still looking at one hundred and fifty eight thousand six seventy three four. Looking at the shortfall we have. And this is bare bone on everything.
Steve, how much would that leave after that?
Forty one or something.
That would leave approximately, um, that was we did one fifty, two hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty in reserves. And it's best for municipality to try and have approximately two years of. Spending under those reserves. So we're gonna have to look at ways to. Replenish, replenish those funds. And that's why I like, uh, we have a few recommendations here. On it. A recommendation would be having a municipal service delivery review, as I discussed earlier. Implement a level of service by law. Investigate options, example of sharp lake. Uh, review all vacant town lots and to declare surplus and sell. We own property of, uh. When working on this budget, like. There's items under fixed costs and that are somewhat out of our control. Insurance, insurance alone, we're not thirteen percent. Give you an idea of like how inflation is. Impact audit, health unit, DSA, WPP, waste management is all out of our control. Uh, normal operation expenses related to each department. Committed contracts and committed loans, uh, infrastructure repairs. Uh, level of service, winter maintenance, water sewer, central services, waste management, building inspections. We are looking at a number of things and. To no fault of any previous council or anything like that, we are, here is what. What has been brought to us.
Everything's gone up.
All the water breaks that were totally unexpected.
Yeah, that sucks.
Eight not the average of two a year. Well, even with the, uh, the water plant when it got hit. Um, yeah, insurance covered all but the deductible. So there's, that was another ten thousand we had to pay out, you know, that was totally unexpected too. So it just.
Last year as an example, water main breaks. From approximately two thousand and fourteen to about two thousand eighteen nineteen, we had three water main breaks. Last year alone, eight. So it gives you an idea of what's happening. Our infrastructure is aging. Is this gonna be a continuous trend? We don't know. Know what we're faced with. So like we've already had dug up, uh, earlier this year, two spots.
You know, we have to separate our water, wastewater and sewage.
That's still being discussed within an administrative level right now and that's part of the capital projects. For the fifteen thousand dollars I mentioned earlier for documentation, that is for the, uh, ECI.
It's not mandatory yet.
It's coming in stages and what they want to do is look at each municipality and how the structure is. And to bring forth. So that's why they're requiring the documentation. Because of the two items, one of them right now is supposed to be due in October of this year. Uh, one of the manuals, the other manual is due in January. So it still needs to be completed this year. We're trying to have both of them done for January, but it still requires work. Of October, November, December to present January. Yeah, that's just a documentation manual. Ministry provisions now.
They, they pretty much know where all the CFA's and everything are now. So then they just have to get it into these manuals.
Cause they can't even pave roads really. It's like, you know, the point is to do that stuff, right?
You know, be very careful.
Yeah.
For an order, so which, uh, three spots where we want to go right now. Of course, the downtown corridor. That is what we are looking at this time. I just for council to discuss. I presented two options in front of you, the two different costs. Just to reminder, if municipality went with a nine point five percent increase. What that is really went, went to the overall tax levy is actually eight point four. Even though you said the nine point five, but if you come eight point four for municipal and education, like set by the government. But it's using a nine point five percent. You know, it's a little confusing.
At the back and it tells you what, if you pick an assessment for the value of your house, it'll tell you how much per month you're.
Not terrible when you look at the dollar amount.
If you look at the dollar amount, and all this is based on, uh. For the twelve is a ten point six percent.
If you look at the middle one, that's a hundred thousand dollar assessed house.
You go go fourteen dollars a month.
If your house is assessed at a hundred thousand dollars. And you're looking at nine five, nine point five percent increase, maybe a six percent to water operating and six percent capital. You're looking at a monthly increase of fourteen dollars. If you're eighty thousand, you're looking at eleven dollars and eighty nine cents.
So there's what a four dollar difference between the nine and a half and the twelve percent on a hundred thousand dollars.
And dipping into reserves, obviously this is.
We go with twelve, we take less out of reserves for this, for this year, right? Hopefully do a correction next year.
Yeah, if you go with the twelve, you are looking at.
Eighteen dollars right on the money.
Taking a hundred and thirty five, uh, thousand, four thirty from. The reserve, that's your shorts for your reserves and. Uh, because you're already taking up a hundred twenty five thousand for the garage. So you gotta take that into factor in then.
Sounds bad, but gotta do it. And then. Figure out over the next few years how to build those reserves again because. Our auditors are sending up big red flags. I think she said we were, uh, one problem away from bankruptcy and losing the municipality.
They just mentioned as well how much, if we don't dip into reserves, we have to increase the taxes.
If we don't wanna touch the reserves. We are over thirty percent.
Thirty three percent.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's kinda.
Yeah. With no reason, not putting.
I know the percentage is, uh, higher, but when you're talking with the dollar amount per month, it's not.
Push you up like thirty bucks a month.
Say it fast.
Yeah.
That's for a hundred thousand dollar property.
What's the average showing property value?
Eighty.
Eighty thousand.
And do you know what the highest property value is?
Uh, I think there was demographics on that.
I have one of ours here, one, one ninety three. I brought my textbook. From zero to a hundred. We're looking at three hundred and forty five properties here in town from one hundred to two hundred.
I don't think she did.
Did you catch that Angela?
Uh, no, sorry.
To say we have, which one is the highest assessment? We don't have that.
Okay.
But, uh, if you're looking at where the most range is from zero to a hundred, we're looking at three hundred and forty five. And a hundred to two hundred, you're looking at two hundred and thirty one. So out of, like, out of the five eighty seven, that is over ninety seven percent between those two.
What's the zero to a hundred again, Steve?
Pardon?
Zero to a hundred.
Three hundred and forty five.
I just wanna point out because I had a conversation with, um, somebody. That, that's really important to note that we're not in Toronto where there's a range of like multi-million dollar properties. And like dilapidated properties and when taxes go out, there's a. Small portion of wealthy people that can offer and contribute back to kind of offset. Um, the lower income. It's just, we are very close to being equal. We don't. Have a million dollar property where somebody is going to be paying, you know, five times the taxes of somebody else. So we need to respect ourselves that way that we are. I realize that our property values aren't our income, but in a way they are a reflection of it. So we are, we all have to help each other out. That's what I'm saying.
I don't need a big house like yours.
You have the two scenarios there. More information?
Yeah, no, that's pretty good report.
It is.
I find myself full of information. I do have a couple of questions.
Back in, when we first met, we were talking about looking at for your plan over our term of office. Uh, have you looked ahead to what next year's taxes are going to look like?
Well, we still gotta wait to for impacts.
Yeah.
Forward with that, um, to know what's coming forward, honestly, it's difficult to tell with.
Best guess. Do a best guess on it.
Yeah. So. It's hard to take a guess strictly on it at this time. So, but we, what we need to do is put financials back in the reserves. Yes, too. That is a key.
And we're not gonna do it with either one of these options.
No.
Yeah, I know, I just questioning if, if there was a increase, when would that take effect? Is it for the next?
Well, assessments right now are frozen.
Oh, sorry.
Next year, impact, impact is supposed to be.
It's every four years.
Yeah.
So the taxes might not go up this year, be beginning next year or.
Your house assessment.
Yeah, your house.
Just go up next year.
Yeah.
These taxes will reflect our next tax bill that we get in September. Okay, that's what I've been wondering, yeah, if it's right away, like, yeah. Is this August, September?
And who knows how the impact will assess us? How much?
Cool, alright. Where are you on the paperwork, Steve? What number are you at here? Are you, are you working your way down this additional information page? I had a question just on the DSA money.
Yeah.
How come it's so high and what exactly does that cover? That's a big chunk of money there.
Yeah, it covers everything from. Pardon?
I think land damage is.
Yeah, land damage, your number ranges across the board.
That's a big number as well, eh?
Yeah.
As I come in, I believe I just sent you the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one.
Yeah. Yeah, go back to that report that we got sent through. Month ago, less than a month ago from DSA.
Yeah.
Their quarterly report, and that details all the different things that DSA does that we have to pay for.
Yeah, that's also. When you hear. So you can see, uh, and, and DSA covers such a broad scope here of services for the area.
Just so everyone noticed, in case you didn't do the math, it's about a thousand bucks a day for OPP. That's a lot.
And it's some councils, we went, we've been through their, their billing with fine tooth comb with OPP sitting here.
Yeah.
To try and break it down, get it lower.
Doesn't work. That you can't play with, right?
That's right. But I think OPP stayed the same this year as last year. I've never seen that before, have you? That's the first, yeah.
Seven thousand, different, I think.
So we could get stung with a bigger increase next year from OPP.
Was the same rate.
And. Fifty-nine to sixty-five, isn't it?
Oh, no, that's right, we're checking that. Okay. I was gonna discuss it or that hurts. We need to go next. So they have the different scenarios in front of you, the two different types. But again, both options are still going into reserves.
Yeah.
Less we go into reserves, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Me too.
We can't really jack it twenty, twenty-five percent in one shot, you know what I mean?
Everybody's happy with cutbacks we have to make, that's the other discussion.
Well, we should take a look at some of our, our service funding that we might be able to shave a little bit out of for the next year.
Well, we should be reviewing all the contracts, right?
Yeah.
Most definitely.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to.
That's not a, that's not a tonight thing, no.
No, that's the next six months, four months, yeah. For, for next year's budget, yes.
Yeah. Again, looking at vacant properties here in town. Okay, somewhere. Another possibility. So what we have to do now is increase our revenues.
Other things, we, there's other ideas with some of these vacant properties too, we might go take on as a town as well.
As long as those vacant properties are sold or putting buildings on, putting houses on. Cause if they're just adjoining, someone's adjoining property and they want a bigger yard, that doesn't increase our tax levy on them very much as opposed to actually having a building on it too. So I gotta watch how we sell those.
I disagree. I disagree because there are some properties in town that are very small and that would benefit from being bigger just for their future resale value and value in general. And it was, it would bring us tax revenue. There have been very few properties actually sold in Cobalt. They have been on the market and have not sold. And I only know of one property that's been built, like one house that's actually been built in the past five years. That Canada is wrong. They say that there have been none, but I know that there's one, at least in the, I'll say ten just to be safe, but I think it was built in the past five years. People are not building in Cobalt. It, we're still the lowest, the cheapest community. People don't want to live here. Um, it's very difficult to convince people to purchase here compared to elsewhere. And so if a neighbor wants to purchase a vacant lot, I think we should welcome that.
Definitely discuss our choices for sure. There's some talk we did with tiny houses, so there might be, maybe the town wants to do a rental to that property. Well, unless we sell it right to the tiny house, or we rent to the tiny house.
Different options that council could review.
Whatever, make some money, right? You gotta make some money. When you sell something, your money's there and it's gone, doesn't come back next year. At least if you rented it, maybe you. Pardon your say?
So. How would council like to proceed from here?
Pick one?
We can pick, we have a number of options. Uh, Steve, do you wanna?
Council wants to discuss each of the increases uh, that were brought forth or bring something else up, but anything else, council, that would have to be. If you want to proceed right now with one of the options, it's council's choice.
I think our budget committee recommends the twelve percent.
I agree.
Yeah. It's the, the amount that takes the smallest amount, even though it's just a smidgen less, but out of our reserves and.
And the difference of four dollars a month is.
Yeah.
Sucks, but it's not life threatening, four dollars extra a month.
I think so, yeah.
Like one with a twelve percent, we are taking a hundred and thirty-five thousand four thirty-five out of reserves incentive. If we did not, nine point five, we would be taking.
So it's about twenty thousand, thirty thousand difference savings?
Uh, you are saving just over twenty thousand. The twenty-two, twenty-three.
Which isn't much, but.
Significant enough, though.
Yeah. You don't wanna go any higher.
Water main breaker, well, water main break is gonna cost us twenty thousand.
Like last year's operating expenses, that's one thing that came out of, uh, was with the water main breaks, you're not only dealing with paving, getting contractors in. Uh, you're looking at a number of factors, including chemicals for the water to, has to be done hydro. You're making more water again, you're losing so much and that can be taken away, like, it's, each water main break is very.
So would I take it council wishes to accept the twelve point, the twelve percent? Have we have a motion to that?
Actually, can we have a motion first, uh, to, to suspend the procedure by law to allow a motion to be introduced.
Sure.
Regarding the twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay, uh, be it resolved, council suspend the procedure of bylaw to allow a motion to be introduced regarding the twenty twenty-three budget? Could I have a motion? Gary, Pat? Discussion, all in favor? Carried? Okay, we have another motion. Be it resolved that at the special meeting of April twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, council reviewed the twenty twenty-three capital and operational budget summary as presented, including tax levy scenarios. And whereas after discussion, council approved the twenty-three, twenty-three budget in the amount of three million six hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars with a twelve percent increased tax, six percent water operating, plus six percent to water capital. And further, its staff be directed to.
Let's be eight and eight.
Eight and eight, water, water capital and operating. She'll have to redo all those numbers.
Whereas after discussion, capital approved the twenty twenty-three budget in the amount of three million six hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars with a twelve percent increase to taxes, plus eight percent water operating, plus eight percent to water capital. And further, its staff be directed to prepare the necessary bylaws. Do I have a, over? Pat? Gary, we'll give you that one.
Alright.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carried? Item five, adjournment. Be it resolved that the special meeting of council be adjourned at seven thirty-four. Thank you, Jim. Especially. Carrie.
And I think I made it on the list three times.
Okay.